And we're still recording.
Point it up, Carol.
Okay, I think we've got past that part, so.
Past that part.
The hardest part of the night.
I'm just gonna let you know that these ladies here are gonna present with our P L, our big areas at school right now that we work on is our data team for sound discipline, our S E L work with Sarah and our P L C coalition team. So Kyla, I believe you're up first. Do you want this to click?
Down, down, not up.
Down is four.
So I'm Kyla Siri, if I haven't met you already. I lead the coalition team at Call Me Opsis for P L C. So I just kind of have a general, my, I first was gonna start with what is the P L C, what was the purpose of it? So it stands for professional learning community. And it is designed to persuade educators that the most promising strategy for meeting the challenges of helping all students learn at high levels is to develop that capacity within our schools and how we're functioning as a professional learning community itself. It offers specific strategies and structures that we can give to teams throughout our building and help them transform how we're running our schools and districts throughout schoolwide and then helping ultimately positively impact kids academically in the classroom. So these are the team members. So I am currently in our T I. I have Kendra Hoven from kindergarten, Danielle Dietrich from first grade, Melanie McVeigh from second, Johnny Ryan from third, Patrick Farrenhold from fourth, Jenny King from fifth, and Krista Whaley from P E. So it's one, oh, go ahead.
What's our T I?
Response to intervention. So I do the reading lab for our kids that receive reading support services. So it's nice to have someone from each grade level because what we decide on as a team, we're ultimately allowed to share that back with them. And so it kind of hits, one team member from each grade level allows us to share things very quickly when they're in their first grade P L C team, second grade P L C team. We can cover a lot more things schoolwide that way. My team and I had came up kind of with a why, like, why are we the P L C team? What's our purpose? And it was to help create a clear and compelling vision to help all students learn. And we strive to create this collective commitment, clarifying what each member will do to create such an organization and use results oriented oriented goals to make progress. Something the team and I were big on is kind of shifting our culture to have more buy-in from staff so that everybody had a role and something that they are responsible for that ultimately impacts our kids. So these are the four critical questions that we actually just did a huge thank you in a, in a quick staff meeting today that these are the four questions everything is revolved around. So we answer those questions as a staff. So we want, what knowledge and skills and disposition should every staff member acquire in this P L C process? But when we think of the students, these are the questions we are asking ourselves as educators. So how will we know when each student has acquired the essential knowledge? How will we respond when some students do not learn? And how will we extend the learning for the kids who are already proficient? So for example, in third grade, they might look at math and say, okay, and multiplication. Which kids aren't learning? What are we gonna do for them? Which kids are proficient? What are we gonna do for them?
And are you doing the same thing in your P L C?
Well, actually, that's kind of where we started. So ultimately, approximately sixteen of us went to Minneapolis this summer and went to the P L C conference. So we adopted, we brought a book back, Learning by Doing, and it kind of sets the, the platform for building P L Cs. We have staff in our school that are brand new and aren't familiar with that process. And we have very veteran staff that have done it before, and it's been quite a while. So we're trying to kind of get those to come together a little bit. So everybody is more informed on the process. So we're actually reading the book and our team is currently on chapter four. So that's that second tab right there, Learning by Doing with an agenda. So we, as the P L C team, preview the chapter. We decide what's really important for staff to know versus saying, here's chapter four, read twenty pages. So we preview it, we decide what's important for our school, and then we share that with staff, give them a task, like, what is the best being for their buck essentially from that chapter versus just, here's a book and read it. So one of the things that we accomplished was early in the book, I believe it was chapter one, was building consensus. So how are you making school-wide decisions? And our school actually agreed that eighty percent, the book says, you know, you don't want majority fifty-one, forty-nine, because you're still kind of fifty-fifty making school decisions. And that was our purpose is we wanted buy-in. So our consensus, our school agreed to eighty percent of our staff agrees on something before we move forward so that we can all have that buy-in. And with the twenty percent, we invite their feedback. If we're not agreeing, then what's the why and how can we grow from that? Chapter three, I believe, went on rebuilding the mission and the vision statements. So again, with new staff, we wanted to rebuild that, get everybody kind of on the same page. There was, there's always a part in every chapter that's what not to do and kind of which way you should go. So we definitely hone in on that. And so we rebuilt those with our staff. We got eighty percent of our staff to agree to three final statements and we kind of did a vote on them, invited feedback. I made a survey, sent that out, collected feedback. And so we have got those all framed, ready to go for the upcoming school year. And feedback from staff was they really enjoyed the process of how we did it and they really did feel that they were comfortable with it, they bought into it, and they would revisit it, not just put it up on the wall and it's in a frame, so. And then our P L C agenda, we added a formal checklist to our P L C agenda, so establishing norms. So each team, we have our teams, but our building also has a first grade team, a kinder team, a third grade team. And so they have agreed to have their norms that they hold themselves accountable to each meeting. And instead of just knowing what those norms are, they have a checklist. Okay, are we starting and ending on time? Are we not getting off tangent, talking about, you know, personal things? Are we talking about kids and what we need to do for them to, to impact them? And here's kind of where we're at currently. So our next steps, we just said a big thank you to staff today because we've found out that our staff likes to be, you know, told thank you when, when they're working really hard at something. So that was kind of our purpose of our staff meeting today. So next week on Wednesday, we were going to have a formal meeting with Carol and Nick and with our district administration. And we're on chapter four, which ultimately is talking about stretch goals, SMART goals. And we want to meet and align what goals does Call Me Opsis have and what goals does the district have? And how are we going to, how are we gonna support the kids at the elementary level to ultimately meet the, the goals of the district? So we have a series of questions that came out of chapter four. And then we're going to ask those questions so that we have the foundational responses to start in September with the brand new school year. And we can start with making SMART goals, knowing we're in a math adoption year, knowing we just adopted an E L A curriculum. So that's kind of our, we, we did not want to start chapter four of making SMART goals in May, when everybody's close to summer. So that is chapter four, creating a results orientation in a professional learning community. And so just clarifying, what are those goals? How are we going to reach them? What's the plan? And then balancing those attainable goals with the district and, and our school as well. And that's the P L C team. So thank you. Thank you for sharing. And I'm going to hand it to Sarah for S E L.
Okay, I'm Sarah Sake, and I'm the S E L person here at Call Me Opsis. And so how, how S E L works, it's a behavior is usually affected by life experiences and stressful situations. How it works is S E L is a plate. I just visualized the plate of S E L and everything else holds is on that plate and it just kind of goes together. So if you have that foundation, then you could have science, you can have friends, you can learn in math, you can do better in readings. All of that kind of holds it all together. How it works is you teach students the skills to regulate their emotions and to be aware of what they're feeling. We teach like recognize what's going on in your body and what that feels like and what you're feeling right now. We teach responsibility, problem solving, how to solve their own problems, collaborate and good communication skills. It's basically that each human being is doing the best they can in that moment.
And how do you teach that?
Well, we have a set of, we have a, each, each teacher has a manual and there's a set of lessons. And then we have a pacing guide and it's a calendar, like, these are the lessons you're gonna teach in September. And then they also have class meetings. So then they get together and they cut, do compliments and then they have a problem, they have an agenda and they say, well, the problem this week or this month is somebody running in the shelter. And then they come up with, the class comes up with their, their solutions or the problem is somebody, somebody's pushing in line. So then the class comes up with the solutions to the problem. So then there, there's more buy-in into it. Does that answer your question? And then there's a bunch of lessons in the pacing guide as well, the teachers follow. How it works, kids need to have connections. That connection piece is the most important. They need to feel connected to their school, the adults and the community in their classroom. And when that happens, more learning can take place. Part of the reason why it's important is because throughout the whole school that we're all doing it is there's more buy-in when there's a common language. For example, if they go in on the playground and one of the playground staff says, hey, why don't you try solving that problem with your Bugsy wishes? It's just, and that's one of the lessons that the teachers teach is like, bugs me when you cut me in line. I wish you would go to the end. And so then they also teach respectful responses, which probably is the most challenging, I think even for grownups. Oh, okay, I'll go the inline. Why is important encourages ways to communicate more effectively, solve your own problems. And most important, regulate. It's scientific proving, proven that you can't really learn effectively if you're not regulated. Calm down. Just take those deep breaths, do whatever works to calm you down so you can be in the moment and focus on what you're doing. It's important also for educators to model self-regulation, like I've had teachers say that they just had a bad day and they just tell kids, you know, I hate to self-regulate. Let's take a couple of deep breaths. We take a couple of deep breaths with me and then they do that together. It also helps students and teachers focus on solutions. So if this is a problem, let's come up with some solutions to that. And I feel like this is important, most important, because these are skills you're gonna use the rest of your life. Like all through school and yeah, obviously into adulthood, you can have problems, you're gonna have, need to self-regulate. And you're definitely gonna need to know how to communicate. So when we asked teachers what they had to say about class meetings and the S E L, S E L lessons themselves, these are just a few things they had to say. It's powerful to see students have a voice. We can all learn from this. It builds trust in the classroom and empowers students and gives them problem-solving skills. It releases a teacher of time and helps them keep their sanity. It's an important one. Having students have jobs is huge. S E L class meetings are integral for connecting kids and their teacher. It makes us a class family. The level of problem solving kids can do is amazing. And that is true. Without positive discipline in the class, classroom management would not be working as well as it is. Their agreements they come up with in this very powerful. The voice, their voices are heard. There was buy-in because they are a part of it. Their opinions are valued. They're more likely to participate because they feel heard. That's it. I'm gonna hand over to Alexis and she's a data, and that's another piece of the S E L as well. We're just looking at the data.
Okay, so my name's Alexis Yaki. I go by Lexi. And I am part of the data team here. Okay, so our team consists of, as well as the P L C team, it has somebody from each grade level and area in the building. So our facilitator is Kate Ferriss from second grade. I'm our data analyst. I look over the data on Swiss where we put in our referrals. And then I bring that to our meetings. Our minute taker is Shannon Donglomans in first grade. We have team members from fifth grade Wade Bell, fourth grade Donnell Magnussen, third grade Connie Sherborne, Reading Lab, which is the R T I staff that Kyla has, which is Lindsay Stout. Sarah's a part of it for our S E L specialist. And Glenda Montgomery from Sound Discipline joins us monthly. In these meetings beforehand, I go over the data trends. I kind of drill down into it, what we're noticing. I bring that data to our meetings. We look through it and we decided as a team, what's the biggest problem in that data? We choose that problem, yes.
Where are you getting the data?
From Swiss. It's where we put in our referrals. Yes. So we choose a problem based on that. So there's major and minor referrals, which I'll tell you about. We create an attainable goal. We don't want to make a goal that we can't get to. So like ten percent less referrals in this area or something like that. We all brainstorm solutions. We usually come up with way more than we can actually do. We pick which ones we think that we have, that are attainable for us. We set who does what by when. So we make sure like Sarah will contact Carol by this time or I will make this lesson by this time and share it with the class. We implement with fidelity. We want to make sure that we're actually doing it. So we check that every month and make sure we actually implemented what we said we would. And when we come back the next month, we always check the data again to see if it was effective and if we met our goals. So major and minor referrals, just so you guys understand, we have Swiss, which we put in. Major referrals are physical and emotional safety of our students. So our administrators are involved in these. Some examples are weapons, drugs, fighting harassment, harm to self and others, and insubordination. We mainly look at major referrals when we're looking at the data because those are our bigger, biggest problems in the school. We have minor referrals as well, which we see a little bit more of because it's more of the daily type stuff that we see, like name calling, kicking, pushing another student, spitting or not following directions.
Why is spitting a minor?
I, I'm not completely sure on that. Depends on, so I like to say.
So it must be volume.
Yeah.
Spitting is, you know.
Yes, I like to think of it as when I'm the teacher who sees what's happening. I will say, oh, they're spinning on the ground and someone stepping in it or something like that. And that's gross. It's gonna be a minor. If they're like actually trying to harm somebody by spitting at you, then I'll put it in as a major because that's harm to others. Yes. So that's how I decipher between. So yes, so this is problems. One of the questions we had as a team or as a staff was we were confused about what is major and minor as well. We noticed that not all staff had connection to the Swiss the same way and thought the same way about it. They had, we discussed major versus minor as a team and what qualifies. So some people didn't have access and had trouble understanding the definitions. Another problem we had after that was solved was physical aggression, particularly in fifth grade. And we drilled down into right after recess time. So we could look at what class did it the most and where and when and things like that in our data.
So right after recess times was the most.
Yes, we saw the spike in the data right at when the kids were coming off of recess, going back into their classrooms. And it was particularly in fifth grade where we saw that spike. Our latest one that we went through was defiance before and after school on the bus. So, and this was across all grade levels that we noticed. We just noticed that there were a lot of referrals before school started and after school ended. So these are the three things we looked into. First with writing referrals, we did a pre-survey to see what staff believed and how confident they were in writing those referrals. As you can see up here, we only had twelve that were very confident in writing referrals. So we made a PowerPoint slide and sent that to staff. Helena helped, Sarah helped. We all created it together on what we believe were those, the consensus of what to do. And that's where I got the information on the major versus minor to present to you guys. After sending that to staff, we had twenty-two who were comp, like exceedingly confident in writing referrals. So we met our goal with trying to bring that up.
What is Swiss?
I wasn't for sure on that. With our fifth grade physical aggression, we decided that our solutions were to have class meetings and to have the fifth graders come up with solutions to solve this problem. Because when they, like Sarah mentioned before, if they have the buy-in to it, they're more likely to do it. So we had the fifth graders brainstorm some solutions. We had a K through five implementation of self-regulation after recess. So that's belly breath is what we use in kindergarten, rainbow breaths or calm music. When you come back and getting onto like certain computers and certain routines when you come back in. We discussed a potential leadership team to admin and to provide responsibility for the fifth graders and we're still working towards that. Hopefully in the next, like next year or the year after, we're gonna try and get that built up a little bit more. And before, we had seven major referrals that month. And physical aggression, coming back from recess during those times. And afterwards, we only had four. So we met our goal of trying to bring it down by ten percent. The latest one that we worked on was defiance on the bus. Our solutions were to go over expectations during our emergency evacuation drill. So the bus drivers are actually the ones telling the students what those expectations on the bus are. And being in the bus when they're getting those expectations told to them. We also had, the student handbook has a, a section that talks about the expectations of the bus. And so we sent that out to all staff just so they can see it and have it fresh in their brain when we had class meetings. So our class meetings, we got the students' opinion on what, to establish those expectations with the kids. So they had that buy-in on what to expect. And especially the kids who do ride the bus were like, oh, I know that. So they were able to do that. After we came up with those expectations, we had the kids role-playing class. It helps them to act it out and feel like they're doing it the right way. So for example, in my class, we set up the chairs like the bus seats and the kids messed around. And we followed the expectations and sat in our seats correctly and didn't stand up. And it, it's fine and interactive for the kids to learn. We had ten major referrals at, at the beginning or during that month section that we set. And the next month, we brought it down to six. We met our goal for that as well. We are currently working on, instead of looking at major referrals, since we kind of dealt with the big issues of this year so far, we're working on supporting teachers at school, school-wide on defiance. So we decided to look into the major or minor referrals, which we see more of, but it's more of those smaller things. And in that data, we saw that defiance is huge around, around school. And us as teachers in our meeting, we're like, yeah, that's what we feel the most of. So we've come up with a few solutions. We're working on creating a video with the high schoolers, helping us create a video to show to the kids of what not to do and what to do when it comes to defiance, which we haven't finished yet, but we're working towards that right now. And we'll meet next, next week and we'll continue that through the end of the square. Any questions for any of us?
Yeah, a lot of work obviously going on. Overall, I mean, for all of you, what are your feelings about this effort? Is it overall? Sounds positive. Sounds like you're making good headway. Is that something that's feeling good and gonna continue? That's awesome. Congratulations, Lexi. I think last saw you really when you graduated a few years ago. So it's very impressive to see you here today. So that's, I'm doing great. Good to have an expert in that.
Well done.
Thank you.
A lot of hard work, a lot of extra hard work too.
Right. Had that, that's good. Um, future work session topics. Are we kind of looking for ideas? Is that the goal here?
We'll have some policy. We've got some new ones of those. So that should be on the June.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
It's the June report.
We haven't decided yet.
Okay, so we'll have a June report and we'll have some policy discussions with some new policies that came out. So if there's any other
Are we ever gonna talk about changing the school calendar? Or did that get just dropped? I requested your, a look at year-round school and last I heard I was gonna get some.
I, that was a presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that, looked at different options in four-day week and that sort of stuff.
Well, I remember going over that, but that
there was no other.
That didn't even touch year-round school.
What would you like?
Well, what, what I remember, and I could be remembering it wrong, was that you were going to touch base with some schools and get their year-round calendars, see what it looked like and how, see how it would work with sports and.
Get that and certainly reshare that with you. And then because made for big changes like that for practical purposes, you would look at a whole year to kind of work with the community on that.
Right, and we were gonna you know, do something for the community, see how they felt about it. And I don't feel like any of that happened.
Maybe it's board, we need to kind of maybe be more decisive on, do we want to have a real solid effort to investigate? See if that's a real
Yeah.
Go, go to those lengths of polling and
considering.
Considering things, yeah.
Well, I think before we poll the community, we need to have an idea, right? I mean, that it's even I mean, that it's even something that we are, that we want to consider. I mean, I think. I think that's what Alan's saying is, as a board, we need to just decide if that's something we want to pursue.
Cause you're right in terms of there was more detailed information on the four-day week.
Right.
Because that's just more common. And so there's, you know, and I know that Keith is part of that too. Survey kind of districts in our league and how many are on four-day week and not. And so what.
Yeah, there's some of those. I can't remember the numbers.
Yeah, I remember getting that information.
So yeah, so it's a question before the board is do, is the board interested in digging deeper into that and going those next steps? Is it year-round school and or four-day week or variation? Or just four-day week or just?
Well, I would love to see what a year-round calendar might look like before the board makes the decision on whether they want to follow it. I mean, I, I, you know.
Yeah, before I'd like to make a decision, I kind of sure.
I, I will, I'll reach out and see. I mean, I'm not sure if there's many, if any that do that. I mean, we know California does. And
There's some four-day wakers, right?
There's, there's a fair amount of four-day weeks, but in terms of year-round calendar.
With, you know, like
There's nothing restricting.
Six weeks in the summer instead of.
That can be, I mean, all that is, is we have the number of contract days and the number of instructional hours. They can be sliced and diced anyway, basically the board seems fit and be compliant with the Oregon laws. You just have to have that, like the nine ninety high school hours within that. So if you did December off and July off, that sort of stuff, there's, you know, it's, it's really comes down to the, you know, more common is the four-day week in terms of how districts approach that. And then they don't have like Wednesday release that's done on that. So I can certainly, what I'm hearing is at least see if there's anyone we can find doing some different, significantly different calendar.
I couldn't, I could call the school in Bakersfield that the kids went to and maybe get their calendar.
For some reason, Douglas High School pops in mind. I think they do.
Yeah, there, forty weeks pretty easy to track down and kind of a different option. It's more a different calendar. And those, you don't see a lot.
Yeah, we took December off and sports, basketball teams, how do that work? Yeah, we took December off and talking about sports, basketball teams, how do that work? Playing, playing league games and things.
In, in, in states or districts where it's more common to have year-round school, you know, they're all on that same page, right? So they.
They're all the same.
They all can manage.
Which is where a four day week might be.
That is, Douglas pops to mind just relates to volleyball because I know there's, they don't play on whatever day they have off. If it's Wednesdays or Fridays or something, there's no schedule games that day.
So it sounds like, I mean, we can, I can, actually, that might be good to just revisit what we had. And if you want to look up the, you know, here's some calendars they use in California. And then the board can kind of mull on that. It's just that information and then the board can decide we want to dig deeper or we're interested in this and not that. Okay, we revisit in June on just that topic. Alternate calendars. Okay, anything else, Bernard? Okay, well, should we stop the recording and go to executive session?